Just wanted to thank you all for coming. My name is Kim Price. I am the Vice Chair of the Bradwell Town School Board. And I wanted to let you know we're actually live on BCTV right now. So, also wanted to say, welcome spring. You can officially say that, seeing 5:45, it actually became spring. But for runners, it's actually not a season now, so be careful. We're just, we're doing a short, small presentation. I apologize, I'm not all that eloquent. Unfortunately, not as eloquent as Jill was, so be a little bit not quite as well. We'll have to, Mark, do you know, if it's better, closer to my nose?
Yeah, maybe it's closer.
That's fine. We're just doing a short presentation for the school, from some of the videos that we saw. Robin had sent out the video clips that we put together. Hopefully you all viewed them. If not, we have a few that we just decided to put together and show. So, we're going to get started. You all, we all have our schools, you all know. We have the Early Ed. We have Academy School, Oak Grove, and Green Street. We're really, really proud of these schools. They work really hard. There's a lot of obstacles now with kids in society today. And they really, all these teachers, administrators, staff, put in a lot of time, a lot of energy, and a lot of effort to try to make schools a safe place for our kids. Make, for some kids, is the only safe place that they have. Our students, we've said it every year, I don't want to go into too much. They're obviously facing a lot of obstacles. They have food insecurities now. Fortunately, the Bradwell Town Schools were able to do universal meals for all of our kids. So, we know every day, kids are getting breakfast, kids are getting lunch. We have backpack programs, so kids go home on the weekends with food. We're able to offer that, and again, we're very proud of that. Our kids, some of our kids, they're dealing with opioids in their families. They have foster care, a lot of our kids, some of our kids are in foster care. So, it's a little bit, life is not that easy for them. We're, our, you know, our, sorry. I get a little emotional about it, watching all of these videos and all of, everything that our administrators have shown us this year. It really touches me, all of the hard work that they do and everything that they put in for these kids without a lot of tough encircumstance. And now, this is just a case study. It's a little bit longer, but it was, we thought it was really important. It's from Academy School. It's about a student that came into the district with several disadvantages. And we just wanted to show what our schools are doing with kids that come into the district and how we're able to help them.
So, Whitney Lynde is a special educator here with us. We were prepping two separate case studies for this presentation, me focusing on behavior supports, Whitney focusing on academic supports. And then we recognized that we were actually presenting a case study on the same student.
It's like a really comprehensive look.
So, but with this, what that tells you is, what we see all the time in schools, the interconnectedness between behavior and academic. Right, it's a two-way street where challenging behavior adversely impacts a student's ability to access an academic program. And academic struggles often leads to challenging behavior. And so, we're going to talk about one particular student. This particular student came to us from another school when this student was in third grade. And we talked about her, the student's level of academic and behavioral performance at that time. So, academically, this student was able to name 13 letters as a third grader. The student had very little letter-sound correspondence skills. The student could count to four. The student could recognize 70% of numbers between 0 and 20. And not surprisingly, the student had a terrible association with school. And would literally be brought to tears every day talking about school and education. Behaviorally, this student, as a third grader, was unable to be independent in the classroom for any amount of time. We, there was regular physical intervention, which was necessary due to extremely unsafe behavior, putting themselves, peers, and staff in danger, which is the only time we would ever use physical intervention, is when there's imminent danger. And that was regular. And also not surprising, this student had no social connection or ability to develop or foster any friendships. It was, in my career in education, probably the most dire situation I've seen as a third grader. So, this is an example of someone who's in the Tier Three realm, both behaviorally and academically. Really challenged our systems here at Academy in terms of what we could provide a student. So, here are elements of what an intervention plan has been for the past two years. Fully differentiated classwork catered to the student's level. So, when the student was in third grade and in fourth grade, we would modify all classwork and all to be things that they could approach independently. We had a high level of coordination between school, home, and outside service providers in the community. We had a positive behavior program, including reinforcement of on-task safe behavior. So, things that the student would earn would be breaks, special lunches with peers. Our art teacher volunteered to do one-on-one art projects with this student because that was a really motivating thing. So, every week, the student would earn half an hour with our art teacher, which was incredibly motivating, and it really became sort of a community really rallying around this kid, as this was really this kid's last stop in a public school. If it didn't work here, this student would be in an alternative placement. And frankly, in just about every other district in the state, the student would have already been in an alternative school. Academically, the student received 60 minutes daily of one-to-one instruction with Whitney, working on literacy skills. Whitney's a literacy specialist and a special educator, and that was a critical piece. We also allowed this, we created this program for the student to partner with a younger class to take on a mentorship role, right, to give this student, for the first time in their life, a sense of purpose in school, like them coming to school mattered, because, you know, that's your critical piece.
And a way to be a leader, too.
Yep, yep. And over time, we gradually increased the amount of time in the classroom with step, paraeducator support. So, our step program has a number of paraeducators for this purpose, to support students being in the general education classroom who need support to be there at the time. So, we'll get into some data for this particular student. So, starting when the student arrived at Academy School, this is frequency of physical intervention spanning two years' time. And the graph sort of speaks for itself. Yeah, so, you know, this is not, the need is now nonexistent, from being very regular to now nonexistent, which is great. Academically, sort of past the, there is a laser on there. I don't know.
Oh, hey! Okay. So, I'm going to zoom into the academic, the Tier Three academic piece, and specifically in literacy, because that is what I did with this student for an hour, one-on-one, every day for a year and a half. So, that started with a Wilson reading system. It's a Tier Three literacy intervention program that has years and years of research behind it. And we're lucky enough at Academy School to have three of our four research rooms, special educators trained as Level One Certified Wilson instructors, which is great. So, this student started at a really rough spot, because coming in at a third grader as a non-reader, you're really, you're at a huge disadvantage. 74% of third graders that are poor readers are poor readers in ninth grade. Like, you kind of, you kind of miss the early intervention time. And so, really, like John said, this was a crisis moment for this kid. So, it was, is there any way that we can, we can catch you up? And so, the student got an hour of one-on-one instruction, which is really, it's really hard to find that kind of time and that intensity with a kid, but it's what had to happen for, for the student. So, the student started in December with me in third grade, and we worked on reading basic CBC words like mop and lip and cat. And by June, we were reading two-syllable CBC words like magnet and cobweb. You know, and we were starting to read more in sentences and more in context, in short passages, and that's how we ended third grade and laid a lot of the foundation of early literacy that the student had missed in kindergarten in first and second grade. And then in fourth grade, we really, really got down to it. So, fourth grade, the beginning of the year, these are percentile ranks. I know this is super, super hard to see, but basically, this first number is a word reading measure. So, at, for the student's age, they were reading below the first percentile, both regular and irregular words. This is a spelling measure, so at the second percentile for the student's spelling combined, word reading and spelling below the first. And then this last one is a sound symbol, so, but that was a little bit higher, the fifth percentile. So, this was the beginning of fourth grade, really, all scores below the fifth percentile. You're hoping somebody's going to be around the 50th. So, then, what I did is I put those scores over the top of the spring of fourth grade scores. So, in the spring of fourth grade, I gave the same measure. The percentile rank went from below the first to the 63rd, which actually put the student at grade level going into fifth grade for reading. The spelling is still, that's still a struggle. It's at the 16th percentile. The student, it was definitely not the student's favorite time of our work together. And then, you can see this combined score also increased, and this hit that average mark as well. Something I'll say about this assessment is that it's not a timed measure. It was untimed, so the student was able to take their time, and, but it gave a really clear picture of just the magnitude of progress, that, you know, the grade levels that the student caught up in one year. And this is, the next graph is actually a timed measure. So, in all of our schools, we'll give one-minute time tests in the fall, winter, and spring of grade-level passages. And so, this graph shows where the student started in first grade, when they were not at Academy School. And it really, it really was, you know, a flat line. This is the point that they came to Academy School and began, you know, receiving the interventions that we offered. And by the spring of that year, the student had started to make some growth, and they were able to hold that over the summer, which was great. And then, really, really just took off in, in fourth grade and got to that, you know, below average. This is where, you know, the rest of the peers are. And finally, kind of got into the game a little bit and made, you know, years' worth of progress in, in one year. And so, it's just an example of a kid receiving the intensity that they needed and showing some big things.
And then, just some, some final anecdotal data around this particular student, is that the student is now in fifth grade and is fully participating in the fifth-grade general education classroom without any further step behavioral support. So, they're now fully independent in the grade classroom without problem. The student identifies school as one of the most positive parts of their life, which is a pretty profound statement. The student has friends and strong social connections. And one of my favorite things is talking to her, the student's mom, who is really brought to tears talking about her daughter's experience at school.
So, that's just obviously one example that we had at Academy School and the hard work with, just obviously, it's one student, but what a difference teachers and administrators make in their lives and obviously for the life of their family as well. As John said, the mom was brought to tears. I apologize as I'm clicking back and forth on this. So, next, we, we did a new position last year down at Green Street. So, we wanted to put on what we were showing tonight, what they had to say when they did the Green Street presentation. So, here's Amy Johnston.
My name is Amy Johnston, and I am the Family Engagement Specialist here at Green Street. I have been here for four months, and in this time, the resiliency work that Green Street School has done has been so evident in the classroom, in hallways, from peer to peer, staff to peer, and staff to staff. It's really an amazing place to be, and I'm really grateful to be here. I've had the privilege of building relationships with a lot of families and students with varying needs and backgrounds, and that really makes my day whole and complete and is my passion to work with people. I communicate with families, sometimes multiple times per day, sometimes multiple times per week, or it could be a one-time instance, or a follow-up, or as-needed basis need. And like I said, the needs really vary. One really consistent need that I work with the families is attendance, as I do track the attendance here at Green Street School. So, when a child starts accruing a large amount of absences, or we become concerned, any number really, depending on the student, I reach out to our, our staff and to the families and see if I can help to break down some barriers as to why they're not getting here, whether it's transportation or routine. And I work with the family really where they're at, because nobody knows the family better than the family themselves. So, I really like to see what's going on and how I could be supporting and uplifting to them instead of making it seem like they're doing something wrong. So, we can bring them in and have meetings and work on incentives to get them here, whether it's ice cream cones donated by the Blueberry House or free family bowling passes. So, whatever works for the family and will help to get the student here. Sometimes it is the student having peer issues, or it could be something at home. So, really getting to the bottom of why they're not coming is, is the most important part. And again, meeting the family where they're at. Other needs could be housing or food insecurities. So, I've been working with different agencies community-wide and collaborating about different mental health needs as well and making referrals through HCRAAS and working with Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust to, to help families who are in need of housing. And talking to local food pantries and working with different agencies to make sure that our families have enough food to eat, because that is not acceptable. We do a lot of work here within Green Street around food as well. We're really making sure that if we have anything extra, we're, we're sending it home and making that a priority. We've been collaborating with different agencies within our community to see if we can hopefully stock a shelf, a food shelf here within Green Street School. That is my goal, to get that up and running as soon as possible, so that parents and families have a one-stop shop where they're dropping off their kids and they can come and crew as a shelf and have choice about something that they might want to grab and can help them out, rather than having to physically find transportation or walk in the snow to the drop-in or something that's really not ideal for the season or for their life. So, again, meeting families where they're at. We've been working collaboratively as a mental health team during this season and working with community-based supports and integrating them into our school. Whether it was the Kids in Coats program, which provided a lot of important gear for our kids, as well as the Secret Santa program, which is going to enable many families to have a really nice Christmas experience that otherwise they might be disappointed. So, again, it's all about the kids and collaborating with each other here as staff and in our community, which is amazing. It's been eye-opening to be here. So, a lot of work that I do is on the Tier Three level, but I do work with families and students across all tiers on here for everybody and anybody. And I have lunch bunches in there where we can listen to music and play Uno, or I can have a staff member send down a child in tears and get a hug and, and talk. And it's really, anyone that needs support, that's why I'm here. So, my role varies significantly on a almost day-to-day, but could be minute-to-minute basis. The needs are everywhere and across a lot of environments. So, my role varies, but my intention is consistent in supporting our families and our, our students and making sure that they have the best experience here at school.
So, that was Amy quickly. And I know it's similar in terms of what Jody deals with and helps out with at Academy, the social worker there. She's actually on one of the videos when they did the Academy presentation, so please go and watch those as well, and you can listen to, listen to her. I know she hates to speak as much as I do, so. But again, this is something that we're doing at the school level. We're helping not just the child, but the family. And what Jody and Amy are able to do, they're outreach to the community and to the different departments and trying to help the families lift themselves up and help support our, as Shelley, her favorite word is kiddos, help our kiddos here in our town. And then, our last one, we have a case study from Oak Grove.
So, I, I teach fourth grade. I, you, we get to teach everything. I love to teach math, and then everything else is just gravy, I guess, but math is really why I would show up for work every day. But I love working at Oak Grove, because the kids get such focused attention. Kids at Oak Grove, generally speaking, are very solid readers by the time I get a chance to work with them. This student here, we have an example of a student who, when she started at Oak Grove, as a kindergartner, she was referred to EST, which is the Educational Support Teams. She had some reading, writing, social emotional issues, attention, speech and language, but at the time, she did not qualify, qualify for an AEP. Then, as a second grader, the student did meet the criteria for a student with a language-based reading disability and qualified for special education. So, then, once the student had received eligibility for receiving special ed, or special ed, she received, well, I guess in kindergarten, sorry, she received a third, additional 30 minutes of phonological awareness and letter recognition daily with a special educator. She did show improvement, but she wasn't quite able to get to the point of being fluent. The district literacy coach, Brian Bitner, came in and he did some observations and gave feedback. In first, second, and third grade, the student worked in small groups, did tutoring three days a week after school, also continued with the phonological awareness practice using the Lynda Mood phoneme sequencing, and there's the Wilson reading program. In fourth grade, again, in consultation with the district literacy coach, we had a small group of students who were kind of struggling to show progress using the Tier One curriculum, which is Reading Street. We had them use another Tier One curriculum, which was Language Live is the name of the program. There was kind of traditional delivery from a teacher, but then it also had a computer component as well. I would say in general, it was kind of still mixed results with that. But then, by the time the student was in fifth and sixth grade, receiving special education services, interventions, tutoring, and participating in small group work, the student was showing some very impressive progress that she had made. Here's a similar chart where showing where she was at in January of first grade, so the dot down there, very close to like one or, you know, just a few words a minute. And then, as she's progressing through the grades, you know, certainly by the time she's in the end of third grade, she's getting a little bit closer, fourth grade. By the time she's in fifth grade, she's no longer one of the, you know, there's still, the whiskers on that box and whisker plot, the math guy for you, are below her dot. And then, by sixth grade, the target is that bold line in the middle, and her, her blue dot is right there. Now, the cool thing we have is some audio of this student from when she was a first grader and then some audio as a sixth grader, and it's amazing to hear the difference in the same student reading.
Had a, may have a. Uh, fun.
What does Jay say?
And now, as a sixth grader.
Well, surrounded by barren fields, it seemed lonely and vulnerable. There were patches on the roof of where the shingles had come off, and most of the paint was chipped away, the, most of the chips chipping away. The house looked shabby and neglected. The inside of the house was no cheerier.
So, it's amazing to hear that. And then, you know, just the self-confidence or the self-esteem of that student when they go from feeling themselves as struggling reader as a first grader to feeling the empowerment that you feel when you're, when you're like, you know, an established reader is, is a really powerful thing.
So, you can see, I, I took some artwork and put in from all of the schools into the presentation. I, I love this one. Just shows the joy of especially that first winter snow. It's been really amazing going into all these schools. I like how we go to the different schools and they give presentations. We see the joy on the teachers' faces as they're giving their examples of their students and the progression and the achievements they've made, and it makes it all worthwhile for us. And the hours we sit at committee meetings, just to see the positivity and know what we're asking each year with, with our budgets and everything, and seeing what the end result is. And on that, we are going to now have a lot more time and discuss the budget.
I think the, the best transition into the budget is to quote a line from the Finance Committee's report that connects these. "Our public schools are now among the most important social service delivery systems in the community and will remain in that capacity for the foreseeable future." And I just want to personally thank, I've been, this is my, I think my 10th year, and this town is consistently supporting these budgets and supporting these schools. And just very grateful for that, and I hope you can do again, do the same this time. If you open your booklets to page 168, where the, the numbers begin. What I'd like to do is go through and just, and hit sort of the highlights and the areas of increase and any changes that were really significant. Most of the changes are not significant, they're gradually moving backwards and forwards in the revenue or expenditure areas. But the first part of the 168 is the, our revenues. And as you can see, in the, for the F20 budget year, overwhelming, largest amount of money comes through general state aid. And that's not any different, it's a little more this year, but that's the same over the year. The other large source is the Title I subgrants. And for people who don't know, Title I is the largest public education program in the United States, the United States has. It's, it's targeted for schools that have a high percentage of low-income students, which obviously makes sense. But one of the things that a lot of people don't understand about Title I, it focuses on fair access to edu- it focuses on fair access to education. It focuses on equal opportunity for learning, for education. But it also requires that they be significant opportunities. You can't just throw money at the problem. There has to be, has to be growth, there has to be learning, there has to be success, and we're responsible for that. And that's part of what you see here. We came up with a budget of $15,368,000. We only have revenue, we can see there, for $15,380,000. So we're going to go to our reserve fund and we'll talk more about that later. But that brings us to the total of $15,368. And that's a $708,000 increase, a 4.8% increase over last year. The 61%, of these numbers, I'm taking most of them from the Finance Committee and I want to give them credit for doing the math for me. 61% of these increases are from salaries. They average about 3% across the staff, these negotiated increases. We have six new positions. They aren't full-time. It's 3.95 full-time equivalents in that salary number. The health insurance increase is approximately 10%. Might be a little higher, I don't expect it to be lower. About 15% of the increase comes from the Supervisory Union assessment, which is where transportation, food service, special education, all of the administrative and fiscal functions, our curriculum support, and all the administrative work goes on. That's in the SU assessment. There is one new administrative staff, there's an addition to the administrative staff, largely due to the increased need in reporting to the federal government and probably the state, and only were the federal part. And there was a shift of 1.5 positions into the Supervisory Union of the Diversity Coordinator position. And that was a one-person position last year. It was in the high, and it's been in the high school budget for several years. Now it's one and a half people. And it's moved into the SU budget so that those services are formally available to all the schools, not just in the high school and the middle school. The Diversity Coordinator has been working with everybody, but now it's a formal part of the process. So that's, that's the revenues. I also want to, if you look at the bottom line on that page, you can see we've got a pretty significant fund balance in place. And we'll be talking about that probably not later tonight, but probably at town meeting. And if, what happens to that, we'll, we may need to decide, if we wind up being merged, we may need to decide what to do with that money. The choices are to put it in the, to fold it into the merger, have it in the pot for all, for the consolidation the district used, or to invest it here in town with the buildings. We've got an energy audit already at Oak Grove that we could implement and spend most of that money and save money over a long period of time because of that investment. Or we could purchase a solar array that we've been trying, energy credits from for, I think, five years. After seven years, we have the option of buying that. So there, and there I'm sure are other options for that, but we really want to engage the public in that conversation to figure out what to do. It's your unspent tax money, so we need your help figuring out where that'll go. And I suspect that it'll be on our agenda several times between now and July, once we find out, if we find out that we are going to merge. So the next place I'd like to go is to the page, 175, which is the, from 172 to 175 is the district line on the Green Street section. I already talked about the district-wide costs somewhat in the revenues part. But you see at the, at the top of the page, School Green Street 03, and those are the total numbers. And you can see a $151,000 or 4.81% increase in the Green Street budget over last year. Most of that, as I said earlier, goes to healthcare, health insurance and salaries. We have their all sorts of repairs and some lights that are going to be installed. And we have completed the Energy Project at Green Street. The pellet boilers complete, the window treatments, the ceramic heat are complete, and the new controls are complete as well. And so we're basically keeping up with repairs and trying to avoid any really huge cost by neglecting maintenance. And you'll see that in other places in the budget as well. The page 177, this is the bottom line for Oak Grove School. And again, health and salaries are the largest component of the 6.87% increase. There's also additional custodial service and a foreign language support person. I don't believe that's a full-time position for a foreign language, but it's expanding that program at Oak Grove. And then the next one is page 180, which is the bottom line for Academy School. And there, it's a 4.39% increase, $200,000, again, health and salaries. We're also expanding the program with Bonneville Environmental Education Center and expanding our science offerings. The after-school program, which has been growing and more important year after year, is also going to get a little more funding. We're continuing to upgrade our technology and in this case, install a digital projector. We have students in need of additional medical support. We are already funding that position. Now it's in the budget instead of just being paid for. And again, custodial support, additional custodial support to maintain these buildings. So at the bottom of that page, you see our $15,368,000 budget and the 708% increase, $708,000 increase and 4.83%. But that means for your tax rate, nobody knows. But we've got some relative figures here that we can share with you on page 169. There are a number of moving parts. The first one is labeled at the very top of the chart, labeled hypothetical. And that's the dollar equivalent, how much a dollar of tax will yield across the state. If that goes up, it's good. If it goes down, it's bad because we need more dollars. That's not fixed. This is an estimate. It's generally pretty close, but we don't know what that's going to be. That obviously has an effect. We also, but we do have, we do have the student numbers pretty much complete. They could change as well, but that's pretty close. But it leads us to the numbers toward the bottom of the page. On line 38, this is the tax rate, including our high school students and elementary school students, our share of the high school budget, which is 166. And then that is adjusted by the common level of appraisal, which in our case is, moves that number down to a $1.60, $1.60.5 or $1.60.5 cents for your tax rate. Again, we don't know if that's, if that's going to be the number. We can't really, we don't have the actual student, the accurate student numbers or the dollar equivalent yield. So it's really almost impossible to figure that out. So we're asking you to approve the budget with the 4.8% increase with the hope that we won't see higher, anything higher than $1.60, but no guarantee.
Have you people been holding the whole stop of Act 461 to explain why we don't have any of these numbers?
Well, yeah, Rob's question is how Act 46 effects are having or not having these numbers. And I'm not sure that it does. It's where the legislature are determining what the equivalent yield is going to be and determining how much that has to be raised by taxes. And so we don't really have that. And the numbers, the student numbers that we have are estimates based on what we know in, we have the needs of the kids in the building, which determine whether they're, how much the compensation is for each student and the student, the equalized pupil spending cost. We don't have that accurately for individual towns. We know what it is for the whole district. I think we have an approximation for the whole district, but we don't know what that number is yet. And that really is where the legislature than anything that has to do with Act 46. We need a runner, someone who's likely to go around with, oh, Kim's here? Kim has the microphone. I think we only have one. So if you have a question, please raise your hand high so she can see you and she'll bring the mic over. And would you tell us your name, please? Talk into the mic because it's working on the video.
I'm Mary Casey. I don't remember having a state police presence at our informational meetings before. Could you please address that?
There is unconfirmed. Do you want to talk? We'll get it from the horse's mouth.
I like this microphone. Can anybody hear me? Or should I just talk loud? I'll talk into the microphone down loud. I'm Mark Anderson from the Sheriff's Office. I'm here as a, to assist the Bradenborough Police Department right now. I do not believe anybody is at risk right now. Otherwise, I would be saying, let's get out of here. So the fact that I'm standing here right now means that I trust their judgment as well as my judgment to say that we're okay right now. However, we received a concerning report. I'm not going to go into detail of what that is at this moment. I will refer you to the Bradenborough Police Department of what that is and what will come as part of that investigation. We are currently searching the building right now. We have law enforcement agencies from multiple agencies, from our state police, Bradenborough Police Department, the Sheriff's Office. Just checking because I can be wrong. Other people can be wrong. So we're putting every precaution in place right now to make sure you're safe. We also don't want to interrupt an informational meeting with as good of attendance as this on a host. So if you are concerned about your safety, it's understandable. I can escort you out. I'm happy to do that. Don't want to interrupt the meeting when somebody just picks up a phone and makes a prank phone call, but this is a response that we need to make. There is not a bond threat, no. It's an unconfirmed report that a person meant to do harm to others. Of a very specific variety. I don't want to go into details. Again, this is a Bradenborough police investigation and I don't have their permission to speak under the cap. But I want to relay to you right now you're safe. We're here to support you. And is there any other questions I could answer? Yes, sir.
I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome.
It just goes on indefinitely. How do we get out of here?
We will make sure you get out when the meeting ends. Thank you. Sorry to disrupt your meeting. We just wanted to make sure that everybody's safe first and unable to participate in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Stop the budget. Hold on.
Corwin Elwell, District 3. I'm delighted to see the fund balance that you have, David. And I'm just wondering what happens to that if there should be a merger?
That's something that we will engage the public in deciding. We, a few years ago, we got permission from representative town meeting to not have to come every time we want to use our fund balance. But we certainly will come. It's a question of what the community thinks is best for the education of our children. If we should merge, should that go with them or should we spend it on our buildings or whatever? I don't even want to present any more options because it really depends on you. If we need to decide that, we will have several meetings and you'll have an opportunity to help us decide.
Thank you.
Hi, Bethany Rand, District 1. I have two questions that I'm not positive actually directly relate to this, but I just want to raise them and hopefully get answers about them in case they do. So the first one is I know that currently they're, I'm pretty sure it's fully grant-funded, but somebody else can answer. There is free breakfast and lunch provided. I know breakfast is provided to all students in the Bradenborough Schools. I'm curious how the merger might impact that or if it will, because I know that's been an extremely huge part of what we even saw in the video about fighting hunger in the community. So that's my first question is just whether or not that is something that needs to get addressed in a budget or whether it's a grant that would continue for the Bradenborough Schools. Second question, it's been a concern of mine, so while I have you all here, is also, it's my understanding that there is not an AED machine in any of the elementary schools in Bradenborough. My understanding is there is one in VAMs and in DOHS. But considering how often the schools are used for functions outside of the school, but also even just families and stuff, my concern would be if any one of us here happen to need an AED machine, that response time could potentially mean life or death. And I'm just curious if there's a way to address that in the budget, especially before a merger? Or if there's a plan to do that? Or if I'm incorrect and there is an AED machine in them? That AED is Automated External Defibrillator. It's the thing that you use if you're giving somebody CPR. Instead of just giving CPR, you would attach the pieces to their body and it tells you whether to shock them. And if so, it applies a shock. And it also tells you whether to continue CPR. And it's been extremely proven through multiple studies that it significantly increases the chances of survival should somebody be having some sort of cardiac issue. So I am concerned about it as a community member and whether or not that's something that could get addressed or is currently being addressed.
Thank you, in advance.
Thanks, Bethany. I'm going to ask, I haven't looked into the free breakfast and lunch thing since there was a series of mergers. And so now there's a track record around the state and I think Lyle probably has an answer for that. And also, I think that any administrator wants to see whether we have AED machines.
So regarding free breakfast and lunch, it's based on a site, site number, so site-free and reduced number. So it won't be affected in the beginning. As time moves on, we don't know. There haven't been that many places that have been merged for a long time. It could, over one district, we may be looking at all numbers, but it would certainly be for a few years for that, if it were to change at all. And I'll let principals talk about the AED.
You raise a good point and that's something we should look into doing. We currently don't have an AED machine in our buildings right now. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess there is one at EES.
Oh, okay, thank you. That was one I forgot about.
We are planning to buy one at Academy for next year. We've been pricing them this year. We've applied for some grant funding for safety materials in general, some stuff with lead kits and AED. And we don't know if we'll get the grant funding, but I talked to our school nurse and we've been pricing them out, so.
And I know, I don't remember my, I know that Rescue is also able to help with lower costs on their, if you were to point out that.
Hi, this is Corwin, District 2. My question is, I noticed that all of the, or all of the schools now cut funding for winter sports. Is this the first year that's included? And does that mean that there's going to be now just transportation? That's, how did we arrive at those numbers? Did it come from preschool and what is that going to pay for? Just curious.
You want to answer that one?
Well, I know we, the cost for winter sports this year, especially, I know the amount of snow with the busing was more expensive. And we really wanted to put it into the budget because it's something we find really beneficial for all of the kids. They're, they're getting out of the schools during the winter. Obviously, it's harder sometimes in the winter to get them outside and doing stuff. And having them participate in winter sports, whether it's mountain snow, going to the, going to the park and sledding or ice skating. We wanted to make sure we continued this. And that's why we put it in the budget this year. We wanted to make sure that we were taking the onus and the struggle for some of the PTOs to raise all of that extra money. They were spending all of their time doing that and make, you know, making sure that every kid was involved. So that's why we put it in the budget this year.
It also has a really significant impact on the teachers' ability to work together. Some of the things that you saw in the video, they can't, they can't get into all the classrooms if people don't have an opportunity to learn about it. And all three schools have either professional leadership councils or teacher leaders or other forms of collaboration that they regularly engage in. And this gives them the And this gives them another opportunity and the kids are in a lot of the way to meet and work on these sorts of issues.
Michael Bosworth, District 1. The financial committees for our, our public schools are now among the most important social service delivery systems in the community. I get that. I understand that. And also get the great examples we saw tonight about what we've been able to do. And it makes me proud as a community member to know our schools are doing that. I do have questions that our finance committee reports didn't really get into. The new positions, there's, they're sort of named in the report, but I'd be interested in knowing more about why those positions are named, are now needed, so.
I'll give, I'll give that a shot, although I'll need some help. There are some academic support positions that are needed because of specific needs of children, of individual children. There's a medical position that's also that, that case. Two expanded, two custodial positions that are, I'm not sure, I don't know exactly why they're needed except obviously you have a higher level of maintenance and all that. Let the administrators address that one. And the, and actually Frank, if you would mind, talk about the administrative position.
I'll address the academic support position at Academy School. It's title-funded, half-time position. This position is really needed to help us close academic gaps such as the gaps that you saw on our case study video. Our state of Vermont has contracted with the District Management Group as well to do a study that talks about how our mediaest students benefit from the most qualified teachers, which isn't a surprise. But with that in mind, we want to really increase our staffing with the most highly qualified people. And in this case, that comes down to academic support. Who can really enrich what students are getting in what we would refer to as Tier 1, the whole group classroom? They can double dose or repeat that in a different way. They can scaffold. They can take different approaches to the work for our kids. So that's why we added that position. And as far as the custodial increase, Academy currently has the same amount of custodians as Oak Grove and Green Street, but it's a bigger facility. And for years, we've struggled to really get school ready, especially in the summers. We have to strip all of the tile floors and then refinish it. And it's really a race to get the, the facility ready for kids to come back. And over break, the same thing, just the other night, we, after having 50 students absent, we had to have custodians go in and scrub desks and chairs and door handles because the sickness is really spreading. So those are some examples of why we really could use a little extra support in that regard.
Good evening. At Oak Grove, the foreign language salary line item that David spoke about is really, I share the foreign language teacher with Academy School. The foreign language teacher at Oak Grove comes to Oak Grove once a week. And Academy's budget has been paying for that. I thought it was a fine thing, but somebody told me it wasn't okay. So that's why I have to increase my foreign language salary now to, to pay for that, the day that she is with my student. So I get it. And then I also have an increase, I have two classroom para educators that about six years ago, budgets were tightened like they are now, but the need was a little bit different. And so those positions were reduced from full-time to three-quarter time. And I have asked to have both of these stay into full-time. So right now, when you have classrooms, you know, 30% of your kiddos in a classroom that have IEP needs, specialized needs, academic, academic support needs, other type of behavioral needs. It's really challenging when you have a para who's there to support the teacher and to support kids. Leave at like 1:30 in the afternoon, so you have an hour, an hour and 15 minutes left of the day. And at the very end of the day often, so that's where those positions are.
And Green Street is level, this is a level service budget proposal for Green Street.
So I think that, that is your question regarding employee positions in, in the Bradrow Town budget. What David was also referring to is, as part of the overview, there was a reference to an increase in supervisor reunion assessment to the Bradrow School District. Maybe someone important might want to mention the, the largest component of that increase was the supervisor reunion. And, and, and a thoughtful discussion from the Bradrow Town School Board asked for a diversity position to be added. That was $165,000, of which Bradrow Town will have a portion of that. There was also a benefits coordinator position added at the supervisor reunion level to help implement and manage the Affordable Care Act and many of the relatively new benefits that have come into play as a result of significant change in the healthcare plans.
And I'll just add, in terms of the custodial staff, we use schools now from very early in the morning until later in the evening with after-school programming, and then we use them for summer programming. And so there's much shorter amount of time where the school is empty and custodians actually can get into rooms and. So we need that extra help. Anybody else with questions? I know I want to, we, we've talked a lot about the students that, that need the extra support. I wanted to let you know that our schools also, full range for any of our students. I know both my kids, we, I moved, I grew up in Bradrow, but we moved out of, out of state and we lived in Connecticut and we moved here. And both my kids went to Academy, which is the school I went to. They're both on the, either range of the spectrum. One needed extra help, one needed extra, extra work because he, he just needed, he was a little more advanced. He needed enrichment. And our schools offer that for the full range of students. I know Jared was able to get, he, he had all of the reading help that he needed. He, he really blossomed with all of the help that, then Judith Bowe, who was my, she was my fifth grade teacher. She helped him out and really just, he blossomed with our elementary schools. And then Jack with all of the extra supports, you know, the spelling, the spelling bees, the Maple Leaf Writing Project, Math Olympiad, things like that that are offered with all of our after-school programs now. And we just really engage and try to support every child, no matter what they need here at Bradrow. And I just wanted to mention that because I know we've talked a lot about what they need educationally of the, the kids that need, that are at a different tier and they need more educational support, so.
Emily, where are you at? I just had a question. I was really happy to see that there's a teacher leadership budget in each school. And I noticed in 2018, there's two schools that had used, or had used a budget that wasn't there and then integrated it into last year's budget. But I think it was Oak Grove who maybe it was a new thing that was going on last year. And so I'd love to hear a little bit of an update on how that's going. And specifically in Oak Grove, like since it's new, you know, I think it's a pretty small budget in Oak Grove too compared to the other schools. So like what you're kind of projecting for the future of that.
So there's always been a line item at Oak Grove for teacher leaders. I think our, our budget is smaller because we're a smaller school, we're a single-strand school, so we have fewer teachers. So when we're talking about, to compare the, the work that a teacher leader does at Academy or Green Street by running a group of PLC, 15 teachers is not, I mean, that's not top of staff. So the work that our teacher leaders have done at Oak Grove are anywhere from a math coach within our building to our PPIS coordinator. Next year, we're looking at incorporating a diversity coordinator and diversity education as one of our teacher leaders and having them kind of help to spearhead some of the work that we're doing in that area.
I'd love to hear from the others, but thank you.
At Academy, we have five teachers who are currently under that line item. One of them is strictly in charge of creating spreadsheets of our data that's produced three times a year. And that goes into conference sheets and report cards. So teachers can give them to parents and that's a really nice way for them to be streamlined instead of the teachers talking the ear off of parents about all the different data. It's all right there laid out and they can take it home. And then the other four are in charge of professional development. They are leading PLCs this year. We are focusing on literacy because we just purchased the Reading Street curriculum. So we're focusing on different components of literacy. And they also help with our continuous improvement plan goals specifically. So they come to our school support team meetings, which are weekly, and they take the discussions at those meetings and then we, John and I, meet with them and we develop goals that are specific to our continuous improvement plan. For example, this year, one of our goals has been peer observations. So they have designed a way to videotape teachers teaching lessons and then process that as, as teams and give feedback that is productive and helpful and really promotes our own growth at the school. That's been my favorite this year.
Pretty similar at Green Street to what Kelly described. But essentially, a group of three teachers and one mentor, who's mentoring with me this year, wants to be a principal. We meet weekly and basically set goals to meet the vision that we have for our school. Our focus is on professional development. Every staff meeting that we have, every team meeting that we have, is focused on PD, not administrative. So it's been an incredible experience over the last three years, developing this type of ways over at the school. Way more effective than what I was doing five years ago.
And I just wanted to mention to, I apologize, after the initial presentation, everything pops into your head of things you want to talk about. I wanted to just mention some of the training that we had spearheaded by Ms. Robyn Oregon, getting it organized. We did some gender bias training as a board and an administration, and we also did diversity training. So I don't know, Robyn, you wanted to talk a little about that or?
Yeah, that was something that we did last fall and I think this previous spring was the, the gender inclusive schools training. And it's something that as a school district, we're looking at how we can make our school experience more inclusive and equitable for all students. So that was sort of step one. Let us as a board and administrators all get on the same page, so we're having the same conversation with the same language. And now we're kind of looking how to bring that directly to the students, like with the initiative that Jerry is talking about, adding the teacher leader as a diversity coordinator. And now that we have an official relationship rather than just by the good graces of BUHS letting, kind of like the foreign language teacher, letting their diversity coordinator come to grade level meetings now that we'll have more staff and an official relationship there. We're kind of setting up a structure for a framework that can be like a web of, of that coordinator working with teacher leaders and then those teacher leaders working with the rest of their whole staff and then everybody bringing that experience down to the students.
Just want to get everybody in. I never liked elephants in the room. So the police officers who respond, and there's many of us, they've completed the procedures that we would normally perform for what we believe to be an actual threat. At this point, we have concluded that there's nothing at risk right now. We are still looking into certain pieces of this. An investigation will be ongoing. That'll be handled by the Bradrow Police Department. I suspect Captain Carrigan from the Police Department will be the person who's going to comment on it tomorrow. I'm not sure if you're from the news, but you look like it. I do like to use humor to help, to help mitigate stress. I imagine having this officer walk into a public meeting that you weren't expecting, it'd be a little scary. So again, we don't think that anybody was at risk. We did do everything we would normally do if you truly were at risk. Right now, we're starting to collapse what we've set up. We're doing some final checks and the Bradrow Police Department will be able to talk about it at a later time. Is there any questions I can answer before I step out? Yes, sir. Did the call come to the Police Department or did it come to you? I don't have that information. I think it came to the Police Department. Yes.
A number of us Town Meeting reps who received a rather unhinged sounding email from someone where we were all called fascist. Is there a relationship between that and this?
It is too early for me to be able to tell you what information is or is not relevant to this investigation. I would encourage you to contact the Bradrow Police Department and say, we received this. If it is valuable to them, I'm sure that the detectives will be interested.
Okay, so we should record it when we go?
I would encourage it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Would anybody like me to hang around for the presentation? I will grab a bite to eat, but.
I mean, it's fun.
I'm just here to watch at this point.
So does anybody else have any questions regarding budget?
Michael Bosworth, District 1. Our finance committee reports a little bibles for us. There was one thing, the story was confusing to me, is about the, the modular classroom or modular building at Academy. So I didn't understand why the money was returned and spent and why a different approach, I guess, is now being taken to leave the same beat.
Yes, good point. So in the capital plan, which we do have in the, I think, do we have that in the, in the document? If we don't, we'll, we'll have a handout at the, at the, at the meeting. Yes, originally, there was a plan to move forward with expanding an early preschool program at the Academy School. But after looking at the services in the, in the region and then in our own facilities, having Oak Grove expand a program. There's one in Guilford, there's one in Putney. These are part of the public preschool programs. It was determined that it would, it would be better spent in terms of resources on looking at the seriously depreciated modular building that accommodates academic support programming for the Academy students. The useful life of that structure is, is at, nearly at its end. So there's been an evaluation of where can those student services be provided? And as part of that analysis, the board has approved moving forward with an addition that accommodates that, those functions. that accommodates those functions. It's an addition that would require about 1,500 square feet of new space. And what you will see in the capital plan and what was considered in this budget is the preliminary feasibility study and design work for that structure with the likelihood of it being funded over a three- to five-year period. And that explains what was once a $640,000 estimated cost for a standalone preschool structure being reduced to an addition on the existing building at Academy.
Anything else, folks? Well, then I guess I just want to thank you all for coming out. It's great to have a larger crowd here to, so that we can go over. But thank you all and we look forward to seeing you. Oh. I just want to say, I appreciate this screen. It makes it much easier. Oh, good. I'm glad. Yes, thank you to Mark for getting everything ready and the sound, all of his custodial stuff, the sound system. We weren't sure about 10 minutes before we were starting if we're going to have it all. So thank you all for coming and we'll see you all on Saturday.